Good evening, everybody. This is a great crowd. Welcome to the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education regular meeting. This is a business session. It's Thursday, May 18th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. We're in the Olentangie Administration Offices, the Berlin Room, and welcome to the first board meeting in the new building. We do have an executive session tonight, so those who wish to remain after some of the awards, we will go to executive session and we will only come back to adjourn. So with that, Mrs. Hadfield, if you would call the roll, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. Bartz?
Here. You would please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have an amendment to tonight's agenda. We will be removing item in Section 10, Item C, the Delaware County Residential TIF. So we're going to propose that we remove this amendment, the Delaware County TIF agreement from the discussion items. Delaware County will be bringing forward adjustments in this proposal at a later date, and we'll be discussing those adjusted proposals at that date. So if I could have an motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? You call the roll, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes. We have a couple of really nice parts of our evening next. The first is we're welcoming the Sutoma Club of Downtown Columbus. Mr. Sterling, is it Reeveley? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Ann Farrell and Jennifer Raishult, right? Is that correct? If you would please approach the podium, and we're happy to have you here and present this nice award. Are we looking for the big giant check? How can we lose? Oh, there's the big giant check.
You already got the little one.
We can run that right across the street. We're good. Is there anything you'd like to share with us, Mr. Reeveley, about this award?
Very proud that we can help you with this. Sutoma is for speech and hearing. That's our main goal. And Ann approached us at one of our fundraisers one night and said, "Would you be interested in helping us?" So I said, "Give me a proposal." She did. We passed it. Now I understand that with some luck, you have been able to purchase double what you were originally going to purchase with the $7,050. So I'm glad we could help and be part of success to your school district.
Well, we thank you for this generous donation. We thank you for your involvement to help our community, and you are welcome here anytime, with or without check. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Our next part of the evening are our community service awards, and the presentation of these awards will be handled by our Vice President, Mrs. Patrick. So Mrs. Patrick, you have the floor.
Okay, well, good evening and welcome. Tonight, the board will recognize the community members who have given their time and talents to enrich our schools. The Olentangie Board of Education established the Community Service Awards in 1986 to honor community residents who have had a major impact on our children's education through their volunteer efforts or significant monetary or in-kind donations. I'm going to name each of the award winners and read to you some of the comments provided by those who nominated them. When your name is called, please come forward and accept your award and have your photo taken with Superintendent Rafe and Board President Roger Bartz. We'd also like to take a group photo of you all in your outstanding community service awards. So after the awards are presented, please gather in the cafe for a group photo. Let's start with Cara Anderson, or Cara, I apologize, Cara, okay, nominated by Indian Springs Elementary. Cara has always volunteered her time at Indian Springs, and you will typically find her outside the art room preparing supplies for the next project or placing art on display for everyone to enjoy. This year has become more than a volunteer, she has become more than a volunteer to our building. Her time, commitment, and knowledge has helped maintain high expectations and consistency we want for our students. We're lucky to have a member of our community at Indian Springs like Cara Anderson. Next, we have Alice Albert, nominated by Arrowhead Elementary. Alice has been an active volunteer at Arrowhead Elementary for nine years. She has dedicated countless hours to our PTO, and she has chaired many of our PTO events throughout her time here. This year alone, she was the chairperson for Arrowhead's most successful book fair and Carnival Silent Auction to date. It's no surprise that both of these events were such a success due to all of the time and effort that Alice dedicated to both of them. She's always willing to step in, lend a hand whenever is needed. We truly, we're truly grateful and appreciate everything Alice has done for Arrowhead Elementary. Next, we have Kathy Evans, nominated by Tyler Run. Kathy is ending an 11-year run at Tyler Run, and she will be sorely missed. She has served on the PTO board as a recorder, and she has started the Birthday Book Club for the library, which added many books to the library shelves. Her biggest role for the last five years, though, was putting together the year-end slideshow. This is very time-consuming and sometimes a difficult task, but she makes sure that every child is featured and puts the entire show to music, bringing many parents to tears every year. Kathy will be a tough act to follow. We will miss her. Next, we have Carrie Gresham, nominated by Liberty Middle. Carrie coordinates two staff dinners for parent-teacher conferences for the Liberty Middle School every year and is a consistent and positive community member and parent. Next, we have Stacy Haney, nominated by Liberty Middle School. Stacy works so hard on the Liberty Middle School's Relay for Life campaign. She coordinates Warrior Mania and Shave a Life campaign. She also sets, sells luminaries and smoothies every week as a fundraiser. Thank you, Stacy, for your service. Next, we have Zachary Hemelgarn, nominated by Oak Creek Elementary. Zachary helps with the leader of the month pancake breakfast and donated money to buy supplies as well as flipped pancakes. In addition, he participated as an honorable judge at the Oak Creek Elementary Chili Cook-Off Event. I wonder how his is compared to Mr. Wright's. We'll have to check it out. Finally, and Mr. Rafe, finally, he has provided breakfast at professional development meetings and lunch for the building leadership team. We have built a strong partnership and look forward to working with him in the future. Next, we have Alicia Kelly. I don't think Alicia is with us tonight. I'm sure she's running around at sporting events. She was nominated by Liberty Middle School. Next, we have Steve Corrison, nominated by Heritage Elementary. Steve currently serves as our PTO treasurer while continuing to work full-time. He has, he was nominated to serve in this capacity, and while unsure if he could meet the demands of the position, he has done it with great flexibility and enthusiasm. He's helped the PTO set and meet financial goals that would support the students at Heritage Elementary. He's offered to volunteer his services in providing the PTO community auditing services, even though he will no longer have a student at Heritage Elementary. Steve also served on the redistricting committee at the district level and has served on this committee since becoming a resident in the district. He serves in the capacity by providing ideas and suggestions for attendance boundaries. He truly is an advocate not only for Heritage Elementary students, but for all Olentangie students. Next, we have Rick Konkaniewski. Did I get it right? Is Rick here? No. So if I got his?
Nicole Lynch.
Nicole Lynch, nominated by Hyatt's Middle. Nicole Lynch has been a substitute teacher and parent of Hyatt's Middle School for the last six years. She recently took on a three-month-long-term substitute position for Jessica Stride?
Yep.
Street? Jessica's husband suffered from melanoma for the last 15 months and eventually passed away. Nicole not only took over his role of substitute teacher, but she took over many other roles. She spent countless hours inside and outside of the classroom, not, I'm sorry, not only helping students, but helping Jessica's family. She often came in to substitute teach for zero compensation. She generously used her family connections within the medical field and supported Mr. Stride, not only during the chemotherapy process, but at the Knickerbocker House as well. She undoubtedly deserves this award and much more. Thank you, Nicole, for being who you are. Karen McGreevey, nominated by Berkshire Middle School. Karen is a familiar and welcome face at Berkshire. She has been an integral part of the PTO and for Berkshire Strong Movement this year. She has spent countless hours supporting Berkshire students and staff in a positive manner. The work that she does is efficient, well thought out, and always with all students and staff in mind. Karen's kindness and smiling face and enthusiasm is appreciated. Next, we have Tricia Moffett, nominated by Liberty Middle School. Tricia is such an integral part, excuse me, integral parent member who contributes to volunteering her time to assist with our concerts, music programs, and works tirelessly to coordinate a week-long staff appreciation celebration, which involves prizes for all staff, a food truck, and so many more. Thank you, Tricia. Nancy Moller, nominated by Tyler Run Elementary. Nancy has been an important part of Tyler Run since she moved here in 2011. She hit the ground running and hasn't stopped. Nancy devotes countless hours volunteering for classroom teachers, the guidance counselor, and the media center. She always, she is always on lunchroom volunteer list. If there is a need, Nancy can always be counted on to fill the role. We are grateful that she has more than three years of experience with us. J.P. O'Donnell, nominated by Wind Out Run Elementary. J.P. volunteers his time every Friday night at Wind Out Run to help us with whatever technology issue we might be having. He is so kind and helpful. Thank you, J.P. Kathy Perry, nominated by the Olentangie Education Foundation. Kathy has dedicated many, many years and hours of service to lead the Olentangie Education Foundation. During Kathy's leadership, the Education Foundation was able to award numerous grants and student scholarships to Olentangie teachers and students, directly benefiting the community. Kathy has been a strong advocate for student learning in Olentangie and is a key individual in making Olentangie great. Kathy is also a fantastic communicator and hard worker. She's a huge part of why the Olentangie found, okay, I can't say it anymore. Oh, yeah, there we go. Thanks for all that you've done. Lauren Roten from Wind Out Run Elementary. Lauren has worked very hard over the years for students and staff of Wind Out Run. She has served as co-president of our PTO and as chairperson of many committees during her time as a parent in our building. Wind Out is a great place to learn and work because of her support. Thank you, Lauren. Marilyn Reep, did I say that correct?
Reep.
I'm sorry. Nominated by Tyler Run. Marilyn is one of two grandmothers. She's one of two grandmothers at Tyler Run who devote a great deal of time volunteering. Marilyn started out volunteering in one of her grandchildren's classrooms and has continued in that particular first-grade classroom for three years. She is a retired teacher who brings years of experience to Tyler Run and runs a small group during math workshop. Her knowledge of math has been very helpful when working with students struggling in certain skills. She is a treasure to have in the classroom. Sarah Rupp from Walnut Creek Elementary. Sarah is an outstanding volunteer at Walnut Creek. This year, Sarah served as Walnut Creek PTO treasurer, and next year, she will be the PTO president. Sarah chaired several events this year at our school, including the carnival, which is a huge undertaking and brings the school and community together. She is also a Girl Scout troop leader for the third grade and Girls on the Run coach. Sarah is an energetic, kind-hearted, and dedicated volunteer and mother. We are very fortunate and proud to have her in our school.
She's also on the OEF board.
And I'm going to say OEF board. Thank you, Sarah. Debbie Steele from Tyler Run Elementary. Debbie, along with Marilyn, is the other grandmother that volunteers at Tyler Run, and she's very busy. She's there every Wednesday for the last four years. She started helping out in her grandchild's kindergarten room. She would help the teacher with anything that was needed, from extra help to, with a student, to cutting and laminating paperwork for a teacher. She has since moved on to being an important volunteer in the media center, and Wednesdays would not be the same at Tyler Run without Mrs. Steele. Doris Steppy, did I say that right? Doris and her dog Carly have been faithful and dedicated volunteers in the Reading Dog Program at Johnny Cake Corners Elementary. The children love working with them, and they are very, we are very fortunate to have them as part of the Johnny Cake community. Smile, Carly.
I think the dog looked and I looked. My attention's there. She made us look.
Okay, Carly is stealing the show. Next, we have Andrea Stahl with Freedom Trail Elementary. I know Andrea from bar class. Andrea is a co-PTO president at Freedom Trail. She is consistently going above and beyond the call of duty. Andrea is a hard-working and dedicated member of the Freedom Trail community. She is well-liked by all stakeholders. She takes pride in her work and is commended for her efforts. Freedom Trail Elementary is a great place to be, and she is a big part of that. Next, we have Melanie Trombetti from Orange High School. Melanie goes above and beyond in assisting the athletic department at Orange High School. She's always willing to help and promote the positive spirit of Orange Athletics, that Orange Athletics provides for its student athletes. Thank you, Melanie. Michelle Voe from Wind Out Run Elementary. Michelle has done so many great things for Wind Out Run over the years. She has been a parent in our building since 2011 and has volunteered in classrooms and for the PTO. She has been co-president and served on all committees, all while being a full-time teacher in the district. We appreciate her hard work and want her to know how much we appreciate and will miss her next year when her son moves to middle school. Thanks, Michelle, for all you do for us. But yay, Liberty Middle, right? Kelly Warren, nominated by Orange High School. Kelly Warren is an appreciated volunteer at Orange High School. She consistently gives her time to help foster the development of Orange High School Drama and Chorus Program. She also gives her time by volunteering to greet parents, students, and guests upon arrival on campus. Kelly's professionalism, kindness, and service is greatly appreciated by the Pioneer staff. Next, we have Jim Waters, nominated by Olentangie. Jim has recently retired from his outstanding tenure as president of OEF. During Jim's leadership, the foundation was able to award numerous grants and student scholarships to Olentangie teachers and students, directly benefiting our community. Jim has always been a strong advocate for student learning in Olentangie and a key individual in making Olentangie great. Thank you, Jim. Ellen Young from Alum Creek Elementary. Ellen has worked tirelessly helping the students of Alum Creek Elementary, not to mention the PTO. She has been in charge of many book fairs and jumps in no matter where needed. Ellen helps keep Alum Creek's ball rolling. Thank you, Ellen. And thank you again for our Community Service Award winners. As a reminder, we'd like to take a group picture in the cafe, so thank you. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you all for everything you do. We really appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think the air kicked on. I think.
Great job, Olivia. Super good job. I was at the diversity dinner before I came.
Oh, yes. I think the air kicked on.
It did.
That was a lot of words.
That was a lot of words.
Do you want me to turn the air up?
Yeah.
It's hard to follow the dog.
Because we implemented the energy sharing program.
They do smell good now.
That's great.
Congratulations.
We can't not be wasteful.
Oh, that's hysterical.
The air conditioning's not working. I'm sorry.
It's all my fault. I'll take the heat and ruin.
I know. I think it kicked on just now.
She stuck in traffic.
Yeah.
The traffic was awful getting here.
Taking that for her? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, it'll be cooler now.
Yes, well, that's, he hasn't resigned from that until he gets approved here, so. And then that'll be on the next agenda, his resignation.
So we'll approve his resignation.
All right, thank you, everyone that's remaining. I appreciate it. So from a board's president report, very brief, the year has come or is coming to an end. I would like to, on behalf of the board, again, a big thank you this year to all of our staff, our custodial staff, our food service staff, our bus drivers, maintenance, our teachers, our administrators, for another great year for all the work that you do. You may feel underappreciated by some, but certainly not by us. So thank you for another great year. Hopefully, some of you will get to enjoy the summer. Others of you will be working, especially some new principals and such. So with that, that's all I have to say tonight in the board's president report. So, Mr. Rafe.
Keeps me, well, this isn't our final setup, so we're still working on the setup. We'll have a little bit different in the future. We just had the, actually, sound com, just finished all the, all the sound and it's loud.
It's very nice.
Actually, it works well.
Yeah, it does. I like it, so.
When it cools down, it'll be great.
I know. Soon as it cools down, it'll be nice. Well, welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. And welcome to our new administrative offices. So we've been here now for about three weeks, three weeks, it seems like, forever. As I indicated, all of you, it was amazing how quickly we, Jeff and his team, and Rob Sexton and his technology team, got everything, moved out of Shanahan, got this building ready to go in just about a month's time. I walked in, we had gotten an order to move out of Shanahan on a Thursday afternoon because all of our furniture was getting moved, and by Monday morning at 7:30, I walked in here and everybody was here working. I feel like, I don't feel like we lost a minute of productivity in the move. So we're very happy in the space. Everybody's adjusting to their new normal, but it's going very well here so far. Couple good things, The Washington Post has just released their rankings for the most challenging high schools in the country. As I've indicated before, there's over 22,000 public high schools, and all three of our high schools are ranked in the top 10 in the central Ohio area, top 20 in the state, and top 600 there in the nation. So we're very proud of the achievement of our high schools and their placement on that ranking, so it's great. Again, I think we're the only multi-district, school district to have all three of their high schools on the list, so that's a great, a great thing. As you know, most, a lot of you were at and about senior awards nights, have come and gone, had great evenings at all three of our high schools. We have here on the screen the three valedictorians from OHS, Liberty, and Orange High School. Mrs. Patrick, as you found out, in terms of challenging names, the people that read the names of graduation have long lists of, we're graduating 1,280 seniors next Sunday. So, Orange High School did an interesting thing last week. They held, as you know, we do, signing days for the athletic, student athletes who are moving on with their careers in the, and moving on with their athletic careers. We, Orange High School held a arts signing day for their students who are continuing with their art careers. Thought that was very interesting. I'm quite certain the other schools will quickly copy that. Good idea. So congratulations to all those students from Orange High School who are continuing in their artistic endeavors. We have five discussion items here. I've actually did not adjust my PowerPoint and asked Devin to adjust the PowerPoint to remove the Delaware County TIF here, but now, so we have four discussion items. Jack will be giving, as usual, his brief update on the board policy updates for his second reading. Emily will be doing the second reading of the five-year financial forecast and the general fund budget for fiscal year 18. And then Bethany Lanko will be giving a food services update. And as an agenda item, there will be a request to increase lunch prices to remain in compliance with the federal standards. And then Mr. Wright will be doing a update on the student handbook, the athletic handbook, and student fees, which are also an action item for approval. Other agenda items, we have four administrative appointments. Josh Battistone is going to be the new assistant principal at Orange High School. He is coming to us from Virginia, suburban, remember, where's that?
Charlottesville.
Charlottesville, yeah, where the University of Virginia is. Mr. Rob Griffiths, who's here with us in the audience, has been named the principal at Olentangie High School, moving over from being assistant at Liberty High School. Nancy Fries is the assistant director of human resources, so we are in the, in the process of finding the replacement principal at Liberty Middle School. And then Elise Ross is here as a new supervisor in pupil services, so welcome. Congratulations. We also have on as an agenda item administrative contract renewals. Our administrators that were on, are at the end of their contract cycle are up for renewal. As you've examined in your documents, that there are some salary modifications that we are recommending for, for some of these administrators to put them in line with our comparative districts, which is above the normal cost of living increase. So it was, again, a planned approach to try to retain the talent that we have. As normal in May, we also renew certified contracts for those teachers who are on limited contracts, one, two, or three-year contracts, and then any administrators moving to continuing contract status. And then we have on there as an agenda item the retirement of Tom Hesse. That was actually previously approved, and it's being reapproved because he had a change in his retirement date. He actually submitted the date... Retirement date in July 1st, but now because we're... He's eligible, actually, to submit for his retirement date of June 1st because we end school before June 1st, so... And as we all know, Mr. Hesse was hired here in the district in 1981. He's number one on the teacher seniority list, and he's a big loss. Great teacher.
Had several feasles in decades.
Over the decades.
Over the decades.
He's had several generations of families here in Olentangie, so... Other agenda items for approval, as I've mentioned before, the student and athletic handbooks, the student fees, student lunch prices, which will follow the presentations in those areas. And then the renovation of the contracts for the renovation of our former administrative areas to those three contractors for the renovations. And we are doing demo now, and they're getting ready to start the actual... Putting it back together so we can use it for the 12 classroom spaces for preschool that we intend for next year. So... And then next, Sunday, May 28th, we have our upcoming graduation ceremonies. Liberty High School is leading off at 10:00 a.m., followed by Orange High School at 2:00 p.m. and Olentangie High School at 6:00 p.m. So, make sure you get plenty of rest there the night before because it's a long day and a lot of hands to shake. And then we'll be back here for our next Board of Education meeting on June 8th. With that, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Rafe? Mrs. Hatfield, the treasures report, please.
Yes, tonight, we have the second reading of the five-year forecast and... Which we will discuss with the board in a few moments. We also have appropriation adjustments and donations made to the district for your approval. We'd like to thank our community members for all of their contributions. In addition to the donation presented tonight by the Sartoma Club, we have a donation made to Indian Springs Elementary by the Olentangie Rotary Foundation for $250 and a photo printer valued at $195 donated by the Burns family to Orange High School Art Department. At this time, I'll take any questions you might have about the appropriations or the donations.
Very none? Thank you. Do we have any public participation comments?
No, we do not.
You begin our discussion items, please, with Mr. Fetti. A second reading of board policy updates, please.
Good evening. I'm presenting Exhibit A1, second reading of the policies. Any questions? Thank you.
None? Thank you, Mr. Fetti. Mrs. Hatfield, second reading of the five-year financial forecast and general budget for
Thank you. So, tonight, we have the general fund budget being presented for your approval. It represents our expenditures discussed in the April presentation of the five-year forecast by object-level detail. The first digit of the object correlates to the categories within the forecast. For example, the 100 object codes correlate to personnel services, the 200 codes to benefits and retirement, and so on. We compile these expenditures through our budgetary process that we begin in January of each year. Templates are sent to our buildings and our departments. They compile their information. At that point, the budgets then come to our department, and we begin the review process with myself and with district leadership. We take those budgets to the finance and audit committee. They then take another look at them, not only by account code line, but in totality. We roll them up into the five-year forecast and apply those to our expenditure assumptions and take it back to the finance and audit committee to look at, in conjunction with revenue assumptions that we make as well. So, at this time, the five-year forecast is coming to the board for approval without any changes from the April presentation. We know that House Bill 49 is still going through the House and Senate process. This is state budget bill. We are using the assumptions originally projected by the governor and his proposal versus taking the assumptions and changes that are coming through the House at this time because we know it still has to go through the Senate. It'll go back to the House Committee and so forth, and back and forth until the governor gives his final approval in June, at which time we'll take those assumptions and make any modifications to the October forecast. We have taken a look at what the House has proposed in terms of changes. It could potentially affect and decrease our state funding. However, because it's not finalized, we're not putting those assumptions in. Are there further questions about the assumptions made within the current forecast model?
I just have one. So, the changes we're considering tonight to administrative contracts won't be in the May forecast, will be reflected in November because they're not approved. Is that fair?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a reminder, our third item there, the TIF, has been removed from tonight's meeting. So, Bethany Lenko, please.
Oh, did you bring her?
She brings healthy cookies. It's the best meeting of the year, awards and cookies.
Someone said I should have worn a red dress to be Little Red Riding Hood, but I have a pink dress. So, next time, I'll try to do better, so... Hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to come here tonight. I'm just going to give you a kind of a brief update of what's going on in the food service department, what happened this past year, what we're kind of looking forward to in next school year. So, this year, we were able to open up some coffee beverage bars at our two remaining high schools. Orange High School opened up Pete's Cup of Joe, and then Olentangie High School opened up the Brave Bean, which was named by the student body. So, that complements what Liberty High School opened up last school year, which was the Patriots Cup. So, they serve hot lattes, cold lattes, iced lemonades, iced teas. They initially started to do it at breakfast time, but now they've actually started to do it at lunchtime, too, and the kids are really enjoying the iced teas and the lemonade. So, it's been exciting to offer that to our customers. Also, this year, we started breakfast in seven out of the eight remaining elementary schools that didn't have it. The eighth elementary school is slated to bring it on at the start of next school year. So, next school year, all 23 of our schools will have a breakfast program, which we're very excited about, and it would have been impossible without the support of Mr. Rafe and Mr. Wright, so thank you very much. We're just very excited about that. Also, if you've visited our website lately, we made a lot of updates to our menus. They're much more interactive for our customers and for the parents. So, if you click on our menus and then hover over a food item, it'll show you all the nutritional information and allergen information. So, hopeful that our customers can make, you know, better decisions when they're making selections, especially if they have a special dietary need, allergies. They can see if this product contains something that they might be trying to stay away from. Also, within the past month, we started a Twitter page, so if you are on Twitter, you can follow us. We are... Our Twitter handle is @OLSDFood, so that's been exciting. I don't tweet personally, but now I tweet professionally. Lastly, we celebrated School Lunch Hero Day on Friday, May 5th, and the fact that we are on pace to probably serve right around 3 million meals this school year. So, that's a lot of meals when you think about it over the course of a year. It's an average of about 17,000 a day is what we average. So, looking forward to next school year, like Mr. Rafe said, we are proposing a 10-cent lunch price increase across all grade levels, which will put elementary at $2.50, middle school at $2.75, and then high school at $3. This increase is due to provision in the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act, known as the lunch... School Lunch Pricing Equity, which basically, in a nutshell, means that what we charge a paying student has to equal to or be greater than the reimbursement we receive for a free student's meal. Currently, that's at $2.86. Our weighted lunch price is $2.61. So, since we're behind that target, we're required to raise lunch prices until we either equal that amount or are above it. The tricky thing is that's a moving target every year. That goes up and up, so we're basically playing catch-up every year. Even with that, with the increase, we're still very competitive when you compare us to surrounding school districts. On that same note, with the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act, you may have heard with the new administration in Washington, on May 1st, our new Secretary of Agriculture, he proposed some additional flexibility in our school meals program. So, Secretary of Agriculture Sonny Pence proposed that we'll have some more flexibility when it comes to whole grains because currently 100% of the grains we serve have to be whole grain. So, we might be able to offer some maybe non-whole-grain products. Sodium, we're going to probably put a hold on where we're at from a sodium perspective. And then milk, we might be able to offer some additional milk fat varieties. Currently, we have to serve fat-free flavored milk. He's proposing that we might be able to offer 1% flavored milk. We're still not exactly sure what this will mean locally as we're waiting for guidance from the state to come down, once they get that from USDA. So, we shall see. On a more exciting note, we did just get notification that we received three grants from the American Dairy Association Mideast to purchase three commercial blender... Blending systems. So, basically, kind of a smoothie program is what we're looking at instituting in three of our schools. The schools that were selected were Oak Creek Elementary, Liberty Middle School, and Liberty High School. So, we're hopeful to use these at breakfast, maybe at lunch. We haven't decided exactly, but the smoothie would actually be part of the reimbursable breakfast program, so hopeful that we can get breakfast participation up in those three buildings. And if it proves to be successful, we'll think about rolling it out into the other So, to conclude, we've had a great year in food service. We've been busy.
How many meals again?
Almost 3 million. I haven't got our April numbers yet, so we'll see what April and May.
I was going to say, is it tracking, you know, like, we're serving more? I know we've added more kids, but...
Right. We're serving more meals. Our percent participation is still about the same. As a district, we are usually around 48% to 50% participation in the actual meal program. When you look in à la carte and things like that, we're a much higher percent, but for the actual reimbursable meal, we're around 50%, which is basically held where we've been for the past couple of years, so... But I do have some things to show you guys, some new items that we have in food service. The first I have are... They're called raisins. They are a sourlicious golden raisin. They taste like a Sour Patch Kid, but they count as a fruit, so students can select this as their fruit option. And then I have a new whole-grain cookie. It's by J&amp;J, and it's a red, white, and blue cookie. It has dried cranberries and blueberries in it, so you can pass them around and take what you would like. Does anyone else have any questions?
I just want to let you know that my graduating senior did a poor job of managing his lunch money this year, so he's left a 25% overage. I'd like to donate that back to the food service.
Thank you.
Please don't cut me off. No, it was great, and I appreciate all that you do. It's...
What was your balance?
25 cents over. I paid all the other fees.
You and me, I donated 40 cents.
Did you?
Every little bit, you know.
No, but it's great. You guys do a great job, and it's just terrific. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
I have a great staff. Couldn't do without them.
You do. All right.
You're welcome.
Looks like there may be leftovers for some of the people in the crowd, potentially, if you play your cards right. We're going to have a small hold while this gets passed around. I'm going all sourlicious and cookies. Sorry, everybody. All right.
You're trying to sourlicious?
No, I'm going to take it home.
Yeah, well, the Boy Scouts will get those over there next. So, with that, Mr. Wright, we know that it's already hard to follow the puppy dog. It's even harder to follow the food, so please do with your updates to the student athletic handbooks and the student fees, please.
Fair enough. I trust you've all been able to review the 232-page Exhibit D1.
Yes.
And the additional bonus nine pages of D2. But I wanted to quickly summarize some of the changes that were made and point out that in our preschool handbook, there were no changes made from the 1617 book, so we will be carrying that forward and review that in more detail for next year and possibly bring you back additional changes if merited. In the handbooks, a quick summary, and I know you've... I've shared some of this with you in a summary memo that Mr. Fetti helped with. What we wanted to do, and one of our most exciting items that we can share, is that we have removed the handbook awareness statement and the efforts by hand to collect over almost 20,000 of those documents across our buildings, and we've moved that to an online format that we'll be rolling out to our community over the summer. We have updated our books to reflect our updated vision statement, so that has been changed as well. More communication language or altering it to better align with some of the changes we made in the last couple of years, especially the information related and available from our district app and the mobile device application. And as far as restrictive language, if you will, we have been very purposeful in trying to create more clear prohibitions against discriminatory language in our code of conduct and in the expectations for athletes and contest participants, including players and fans, in our athletic handbook. So, it's something that we've been battling, and so we have worked to increase and better clarify some of our definitions of discriminatory language so that we can take a closer look at that. We have revised our prohibition against discrimination so that it brings in our full policy because it goes farther than just Title VI-type ramifications that we've talked about in the past, so new language has been added in that area. We have added technology misuse to include violations that could occur on the bus, and that's something that's never occurred before, so we wanted to... We've talked often about the buses being an extension of the educational experience, and we want to make sure that, should there be technology violations there, we can deal with those as they occur. At the elementary level, we've added some language for accommodations for students with food allergies during class parties. We've also added some clarifying language around our gifted programming at all levels and additional language for our college credit plus offerings and what's available for our students, and that is only in the middle school and high school handbooks to reflect what our students are able to experience through that program. And we've also clarified in our middle school and high school handbooks some information about concealed carry to comply with new additions to a higher revised code. And then the last items are all from the athletic handbook. We have clarified language about follow-up drug testing for student athletes who face a violation of our drug testing protocol or our alcohol, tobacco, and other drug policies. We have also clarified some language regarding voluntary referrals and language regarding ineligible athletes and their opportunity to continue participation with the team while not being able to compete. And then finally, we have raised the scholar-athlete GPA requirement to reflect the similar requirement for entrance into the National Honor Society. So, we have married those numbers as well. So, those are the handbook items that have been changed of note, and with that, I'll ask or take any questions about any of the handbooks. All right. And then very quickly, let me move into the fee portion. We continue to monitor our fees, continue to try and work towards reducing. Our efforts continue around eliminating all fees with required classes, and our work has reached a point where the only required courses that still do have some school fees are our science classes, which use consumables each year through the lab experiments. So, we continue to investigate that, and through a quick study, we found that a typical science education experience would cost each student a little bit under $50 across their four years, if they took four years of science in the traditional tracks. So, other updates. We have increased a fee for the summer enrichment experience. Participation has soared. It's just an outstanding opportunity, and with that, we need to be able to supplement the equipment needed and the resources of staff to cover those classes. The AP test fee will be going up $5, and this is just to cover each of the schools. The college board... the equipment needed and the resources of staff to cover those classes. The AP test fee will be going up $5, and this is just to cover each of the schools. The college board had a very late change after we had our approved fees, and so we operated a very, very close margin with our AP tests this year. So we are increasing that to $100 for the AP test, yet we will only charge each student what the test costs. But just in case college board raised the test, we wanted to be in preparation for that. We have assigned fees for five new courses. We have CAD and Advanced Studies and Architectural Drafting Advanced Studies in our Industrial Technology Department. We have added AP Physics I, which is our second AP Physics course. And at the Olentangie Academy, we've added third-year classes in Medical Interventions or Advanced Engineering. So those fees are being asked to be approved. Two more. Our senior fee has been raised five, or $4 to $50. And again, that is to make sure that we can account for charges for commencement, our transcripts for life, our students, anytime they need a transcript, that is taken care of, the costs associated with getting their diploma, and the cover, those items, and parking for commencement for the families, and then the venue itself. So that's kind of averaged out, and we are at $50 for a senior fee. And then we do have various increases to elective course fees between $1 and $10, just to reflect additional, not additional, increased cost on the books and the resources that have been used in those elective courses. And that is the fee update. Any questions on those?
Just one quick one. With the change to the Schottenstein Center here, how is that going to affect that senior fee then? Is that a significant increase in cost?
No, we're pretty confident we're going to be very close in our costs. We're going to have a better idea a year from now when we can finalize the fees going to be charged. We also get a little bit of break on some of the extras that have been added on to the cost of the Celeste Center. So it's going to be a study of one year, so we anticipate that this cost will cover us, and that will be for the class of 2018, our first group down there. And then if we need to make an adjustment, we will bring that back for a year from now. But our hope is that this is the cost that we'll need.
What's the term of the contract that we're going to get into with that?
We have a three-year contract for the graduations of 18, 19, and 20, with opportunities to extend that when we're comfortable.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, 19, it was the first four?
20.
20 will be the first, I mean, four.
Where do you park for Schottenstein? That's included?
Close by, and then the baseball, Build A the Stadium, and Jesse Owens, and then even farther out towards Ackerman Road.
I'm hoping what they'll do, having just been there for a venue, is they'll bring people in one way and send them out the other because that just didn't work so good the other night.
You're challenged on there.
It was free, but it was a challenge.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hatfield, any comments? Public participation session number two?
No, there are none.
So just to clarify on the board action items before I bring these, that B is a no-go as part of that. Thank you. So with that, I will bring Board Action Item A for approval. If I could have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes. Mrs. Hatfield, if you bring the treasure action items, please.
I'd like to bring forward Items A through D. Approve the five-year financial forecast. Approve the general fund budget for fiscal year 18. Amended appropriations and approved donations to the district, please. So moved.
I'll second. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. Rafe, I know we have a couple of things we're going to pull out for some separate votes on your superintendent action items.
Yes, we'll do those first. So I will submit for approval Action Item A2.
Which is the renewal of the administrative contracts for 1718. Okay? If I could have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
No.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
And then I will submit for approval Superintendent Action Item B2, which is to approve the classes by substitute worker for 2017-18 school year specifically, condition of subsequent successful background check, receipt of final ministry review of application records, and receipt of all necessary documentation for Mr. Andrew P. Bartz.
I know that kid. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Abstained?
Could have, and that would have been...
This last week, that would have been justice. Mr. Rafe, if you would present the rest of your superintendent actions.
Yes, I'll present for approval A1 and 3 through 11, B1, 3 through 11, and then Items C through I.
A motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer, if you would present the Chief Operating Officer action items, please.
Sure. I'd like to submit for approval 15A, approved supplemental employment of Kathryn Rafe on the building leadership team at Freedom Trail Elementary School for the entire year.
So moved.
Second. There we go. Any comment?
No, I'm good.
Call the roll, please.
I'm going to get in trouble.
He likes her.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Didn't even pause this time.
So with that, just as a reminder, before we move to executive session, our next meeting again is Thursday, June 8th, 6:00 PM here. There's a lot going on with graduations. Please everyone be safe, be careful, and remind your kids of the same. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22 of the Higher Rights Code to consider the employment of a public employee. If I could have a motion?
So moved.
A second, please?
I'll second.
Roll, please, Mrs. Hatfield.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes, as a reminder, we will only be coming back to adjourn, so if you're willing to remain, we will see you in a bit. If not, have a great week.